I'll start with any comments from the audience. Some are back on schedule. Remarks in the chair, I do have a few, a few comments tonight. The first is just to thank our select board members, our FinCon members, our town administrators for joining us tonight. We'll have a solid hour to discuss finances for this upcoming year. Budget season. It's important to us that we have these engagements with you and that we start early and we continue to have these engagements with you through the process. And so, you know, it's our commitment that we're going to ensure that we work with each of the FinCons select boards. So we have a successful budget come the spring. So looking forward to the discussion. In case you guys haven't noticed, Erica isn't here tonight. I think most of you know that Erica handed in her resignation about two weeks ago to me. Tonight, we'll talk about the process for replacing, for finding a replacement for Erica. But if she's watching from home, I just want to say thank you to Erica for all of her hard work, her commitments, her contributions. You know, in my mind, she was a sort of a, a post a child school committee member. And so I really appreciate everything that she did and she has big shoes to fill. So. And last, just with all the things going on with the government.
We need to hear you back here.
I'll try to project more. Just with all the things going on with the government shutdown and government happenings right now. I just wanted to point out, this is a great opportunity for us to look back at our community and find families in need. I know I've seen a few families visiting their food pantries quite often. I know there's families out there that need that support during this government shutdown. And especially, you know, with our children, it's a great opportunity when we can, when we have the resources to do so, to get them engaged in the community and to, to help, to show them that they can help as well, right? And so just consider ways that you can help during these hard times. With that, we will shift to the student advisory board.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ethan Zvon, the current SAB at large. I am a sophomore from Boxford. And here are the updates since our last meeting. Some upcoming events is Masco football, the sixth seed has its first playoff game this Friday against the 11th seed Melrose at home. Some current events are field hockey, our NEC champs, and just won their first playoff game against North Attleboro. Yeah. Boy soccer, the 60 just won their first playoff game against Chelseaa, the 27 seed, three to two. Girls volleyball lost in their second round of playoffs against Canton. And girl soccer beat Melrose in the first round of playoffs. Some past events are varsity football performed what Salem News is calling the Masco miracle, coming back to beat Marblehead 42 to 43. Coming back from a Marblehead 42 to 25 lead going into the fourth quarter, making it the first time that Masco became NEC champs and has beat Marblehead. And varsity golf are NEC champs and are the runner ups to the state championship. And homecoming was last Thursday. It was great. We had a large attendance and everything went smoothly. And that's all I got.
Questions, comments? Well, you know the deal, you're always welcome to stick around and partake in the fun or if you have other things you need to do tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will shift over to our discussion of FY27 budget with town officials. I'd welcome you guys to come join us at the, at the table.
Sorry, I'm sending it over.
He's sending me a deck.
Definitely easier to hear here in the session too. There's a big, this area that catches all the sound.
What faster than that probably.
Mike, I'm sending it to you. Coming from the.
Okay, I'm sure. No?
Okay.
You're done first.
Well, these mics hopefully are getting something through.
While we're waiting, did, did everybody receive the enrollment report that was sent out over the last couple of weeks?
He did. Upfield did, I know Matt.
I mean, I think my only opening comment is the, we have the DCI, that's a DCI subcommittee that's still established. They meet semi regularly with Jeff and Mike. They're talking through early budget discussions right now. Joe will probably have some thoughts as the lead of the DCI for the group in a little bit. But I would say that budget discussions are ongoing within the, within the DCI right now. As a full school committee, we haven't discussed much at all yet.
Like I'm gonna try it a different way, it's not coming through. This isn't slightly older version, so bear with the.
Is this one of the documents you sent to the Topsfield people earlier this morning?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Sorry for this.
You need to sign in with your board and leave the town for the minutes. So make sure you're acknowledged correctly.
Sure.
And then. That one should have sent. I guess we could start by doing some introductions, I guess, and we start that process. So I'm Jay Awal, I'm the chair for FinCon, for Topsfield.
Costa Prontakis Middleton Select Board.
Dan Valcheck, Boxford FinCon.
Michael White, Chairman of the Boxers FinCon.
Barbara Jessel, Boxford Select Board.
Michelle Marcy, Link, Topsfield Select Board.
And then also we have John.
John Erickson, Finance Committee.
And we also have our town administrators, representatives from the town administration sitting behind us and are choosing to sort us from behind. Mike, I don't know if it got to you or.
Just trying to make sure I get saved in the right place and.
We go. Right. We met last year or later, later in the process and excited, I think we were all excited to begin earlier and talking through this. We wanted to share some of the challenges and realities and opportunities that we are as a, as a community. Some of this information is similar and it's based on what we had from past years and the budget that, as some numbers have been added and updated, some are still based on budgets. But if we can walk through it and the first page, reiterate three towns is somewhat unprecedented. If you think about it, last year was the first time that three towns sat together with the school committee as an entity, a single entity. And I hope it expresses and understands that as a group, we, all four of these entities, the three towns and Masco, have some very challenging financial situations in front of us. And we're trying to find that balance, everyone is, and we recognize that, but it's something that we need to continue to look at. And it will continue to be a challenge. Topsfield, Masco, I mean, Topsfield, Middleton and Boxford all represented Masco and that's where, how the tri-town came about. So we all recognize that Masco was a core linchpin across this organization, this community, these communities and the community of. But the towns are struggling to balance needs and affordability across all of the areas. We need to consider the whole community. The leaderships are concerned that education costs are growing at an unsustainable rate and consuming greater proportions of our overall budgets. In 10 years, it's gone for half of our entire budgets to two thirds of the budget for each town. We love the community and we, and the tri-town, but there's some difficult discussions that we've got to continue to have, continue to evaluate. The towns, all three of the towns are effectively at their levy capacity. What that means is that anything over new growth and two and a half percent, so new growth is new house or an addition to your house or a new store or building. Anything over that requires us to do an override. For all three of the towns. Topsfield is right, is actually at, completely at that levy limit. Boxer and Middleton are effectively there as well, but sufficiently close. Our guidelines, just so you, which were delivered later, earlier today from Topsfield, are two and a quarter percent for each of the three entities. So that's the elementary school, the town and, and Boxford and Masco. The sum of those plus our health insurance known increase is totals the entirety of our, what we're allowed to collect next year, this year, this coming year, without an override. Boxer and Middleton are close to that as well. But I believe their guidelines are going to show it about two and a half percent. But in all three cases above those guidelines really means an override. Last year, there were a number of challenges we had and we, but we addressed them all as a group. That included an $830,000 override for Boxford, plus a $19 million debt exclusion. For Middleton, it was a $1.9 million override. For Topsfield, there was a $1.8 million in override and $2.5 million in water enterprise expenses for water mains and replacing those. And for Masco, it was a $3.3 million increase, of which 700 was funded by E and D, but that brought you E and D to you. Which means there is, in all probability, unless something miraculous happened, there's, I suspect there's no E and D opportunity for you all this year. Next slide is where we are facing now, all four of our entities are facing health insurance. After a 19% increase for Masco, for Topsfield last year, 19%, we're looking at a 12% this year. It's 31% in two years. And it hasn't been four or five percent before that. This is a big part of our, all of our challenging problem. Boxer also has salaries and commitments to fund the DPW, take on debt. Middleton has a public safety town hall additional debt that they've just approved and will start acquiring. They've got water system, as does Topsfield due to PFAS and the expectation that that's going to have substantial impact to our towns for their water funds and fees. Substantial means 20 plus million dollars. Maskonomi, I mean, a Topsfield health insurance, salaries, PFAS agreement. And our, similar to E and D, our stabilization funds are at their minimums right now, which means there's nothing to pull out without putting ourselves below our guidelines, which would put us into question with our bond ratings. And then pensions and OPEB costs are continuing to eat into our accounts. Masco has the health insurance salaries that we're aware of, the 2026 E and D for operations, large capital assets coming. I heard some good news through the grapevine on at least part of that, a start for that, so positive, but we have to do it. And your E and D are at minimums. I feel like I'm the negative person here right now, but. Last year's budget from our perspective, 46.697 million dollars. Town assessment was 36, some of the town assessments was 36,397,000 dollars. 1503 tri-town residents this year that are being serviced. Inclusive, and this number is budgeted because we weren't able to get actuals, but 69 out of district students. An out of district placement. This equates to about a $31 million, 31, excuse me, $31,600 cost per student educated. And the cost to the towns of $24,000 a student. To operate the school costs us $31,000 a student. Staff enrollment did increase by five students and staffing levels were reduced by four and three quarters. That still puts us at a 34% drop in enrollment. I'm sorry, that's the numbers off, it's a 24%, that's a typo, 24% drop in enrollment. And, and staffing levels correspondingly have dropped by 4.5% over the past 10 years. And again, similar.
Question, is that staffing enrollment, is that educator staffing or special ed staffing?
From our perspective as a town, it is not incumbent on us to evaluate whether it's teacher, special ed, janitor, administrator, that is part of your role. What we're highlighting is that the total number of employees to run the school and the, which is our largest expense item.
Right.
Has dropped by a total of four and a half percent.
So even if they're pretty much mandated by the increasing special needs of our students, that doesn't factor into your calculation?
It's, this is, it factors into the cost and the resulting cost, but it doesn't.
Just want these.
We're not judging, we're, you know, should you put it here, here, how to do that? We are asking for you all to look at it and look deeper, but we're not, you know, we're, I'm not skilled enough in any of this stuff to evaluate, should I put someone in special ed or, you know, resource team somewhere else? And or what's the number of students that a teacher could support or a staffing needs support? We don't, I don't believe that's any of our places.
By putting that number up there, it frankly suggests that you do.
Well, what I'm stating is facts. Your enrollment has dropped by four, by 24% and your staffing level has moved down by four and a half percent. You can explain why, it's not incumbent on me to do that. What I'm looking at and seeing is, and what we're seeing is, we went from 2,088 students 13 years ago and we have dropped a total of 11 staff since that point and we're at 1,500 students.
So I guess maybe a different way of saying it, maybe more direct, right? Is, is the theory for you guys that if the enrollment's going to drop by 24%, then the, then the employee should drop by 24%?
I don't think 24, no. I'll speak for myself, after I'm done, people will speak for themselves. I'll speak for myself, I don't think 24, no. But certainly more than four. You've, you've gone down by 500 students and you've dropped 11 staff. Yeah.
Everybody else, I mean, there are.
I, I think, I think we're gonna, if we finish, well, we can do it any order you want. Once we finish this, everyone else, I think, last year, were they, each person then spoke for a minute?
That's okay with me.
That's okay with you all. Moving on, just the, there are a couple of other just highlights. This is just, this slide is from last year, it was here last year as well. It just shows the numbers and adjusted for the actuals, or the actual budget, not actuals, for the budget numbers for 2026. And this is where we get to the number of students in the past 10 years, which is 471. And the overall students, which from their high point in 2012 was 2,088. And your staffing at that point, at all of those points was 255 and right around 256, 255. And this year, by budget, it's down to 243, so 12 people. Eleven and a half. The other item is, we all know out of district placement, it's a challenge. And that's an incredible expense impact to us. In, in Topsfield exclusively because there was a expectation last year or a belief by the elementary administration and school committee that a curriculum change was going to have a direct impact and benefit to the element, to the reducing out of district placements throughout, and special ed placements, not just out of district. The town included a $200,000 override to fund that curriculum. Above what their budget ask was, we funded that because we felt that there was an opportunity and a belief that that might reduce it. I think that's a message where we're trying to get across is spending money now to save in the future, if it's, if you can convince people, is not a bad thing at all. And in that case, my hope is, is it would help and have a benefit here in the longer run. But in 2012, you had 32 students out of district. That was 1.53% of the population. This year, based on budget, again, this is budget based on where we were, we don't have the actual numbers, 69 or 4.6% are out of district. Almost 5% of the population for, in essence, sorry respectfully, this is going to be a little inflammatory, the school has chosen to say, we can't service you.
No.
I mean, it's uncomfortable.
It's absolutely no.
Because you, you have a choice, you have a choice to say, no, we can provide services, you have a choice.
Let's just stop that.
Right.
No, we don't. We've had this conversation, sorry Matt, but I'm furious at that statement. That inflames me and that is not the truth.
Explain why?
I was actually just looking at the presentation from last year's budget because I, I had a feeling something was going to come up. But, and I will pull it up because here I go. There were, I'm just getting to it, hold on a second. And I don't know if you have it in front of you, Mike.
41.
41 students.
Every set foot in Masco.
Thank you.
But there's a choice along the way with that, that.
No choice.
There is, it's not.
There's not.
Decision, I think offensive, this whole presentation, this is very accusatory.
We don't get it.
And I haven't even seen this yet, just coming and ranting off random numbers, it's not helpful.
These are the same numbers that were here last year and these are the numbers that we present in each year.
I think we disagreed with them last year.
Yeah, I did.
That's no.
So having. The out of district placement, at the end of the day, the school has the choice to say, no, we're going to fight this. I'm not advocating that you should, but the act of choosing not to fight any of these means that you are saying and accepting that you are not going to be providing that service. Yeah, I, you are accepting it, actually, it's clearly, I just.
Guys. Yes, to me, for guidance, right? Whatever, it's okay. I appreciate the passion behind this, I really do. It's just point of work. Adrian.
So I think the challenge we're having right now is that, and I'll try and speak as loud as I can, because I know I have a soft voice. It, it feels a little bit like you guys are presenting our data to us. We haven't even seen data from our administration at this point, on our budget, on our actuals, on any of it. And so putting this out here prematurely feels a little wrong because you're setting a tone based on a false premise. And you just said before this that you're not an expert on this. Certainly, we all do our best to be as knowledgeable and informed as we can, but every single one of us had to understand how out of district placements work. And we came in with our own ignorance and biases that we had to repair as members of this committee to represent our communities. The things that you're saying out loud right now represent that same ignorance and bias that we all maybe came to the table with that hasn't quite been resolved. There are not a lot of choices with out of district placements. There are parents that can advocate for their child and the district has to honor the decisions that are made. We can't decide to invest $3 million in legal fees to keep as many kids in district as we can, or you guys would be on our case about that too. So I don't think it's about choice. I think it's about understanding the children and making the best decision for them. And there are a lot of parties who are inputs to that. And I think that this approach is very reductive and it does no one a service, especially the children who have these needs in our community and deserve the education that should be afforded to them. So I understand why everybody's inflamed. I understand why you guys might feel defensive about this because you have an enormous responsibility as well. But I would caution everyone to just let the numbers be what they are and not point to any particular solution, especially if you're not sitting at this table every two weeks like we are. Because it's incredibly complex.
So. I've been sitting here trying to decide whether to interrupt you like every other statement to tell you what the numbers really are or to wait until the end to try to give you what the numbers really are. What, what do you prefer? Because I don't want to be confrontational about this, I want this to be cooperative, right? So you've done your analysis and you're coming in with these numbers and I'm not saying it's a bad analysis or anything like that, you're working with the data that you have. I have some data that you don't have. So I guess what all I'm asking is, I think the situation's not nearly as bad as you're coloring it to be, I'll say, but you wouldn't know that. So I don't, I'm not finding fault with what you're saying here, right? You're now, you're analyzing what you have. So all I want to say is, should I wait until the end? Or would you like me to chime in immediately and give you some of the numbers as to what they, what they really are, what they look like? Yeah.
Michael White, Boxer Finance Committee. I agree, I don't think you get hung up on numbers right now.
Yeah.
Would take issue, I think the reason why we're here on November 5th, 6th, 7th, early November. Is because in the past, at least in my experience, this process has sort of been rushed. And for the past five or six years, if not more, I've been hearing, this is unsustainable, this is unsustainable, this is unsustainable. And I go, it's funny, we've been sustaining it for five or six years, so obviously every year we say it's unsustainable, we have sustained it. But I'm here now because after hearing that five, six, seven, eight years, I'm at the point where I'm saying to myself, this is unsustainable. And I will correct your numbers. And Roma's not down 24%, it's down almost 30%. It's like 28.4% and if you go back a few more years, it's like 30%. Almost 600 students, it would fill the auditorium here. And I think it was a really great question about, shoot, if enrollment goes down 20%, do you think students could go down 20%? Anybody knows that's, no one wants that. No one would ever suggest that in business and anything else like that, it can't happen. But I think why we're all here on this beautiful Wednesday is that this is really serious. And, and I think the boards, the select board, the finance committee, town administrators are scared silly about what's going to happen at Masco. And there's, I, I do not envy you the decisions that you have to make, but I think, I think we're here to say, please try to make tougher decisions that will help the budget that you have in the past. That's, that's, I think, what we're saying, because we're here. I mean, prior to that, you know, we'd show up in January, February, you know, what, who is the budget, oh, yada, yada, we don't like it. But here we are, in November, we're here because I think we're a lot more serious. And I think all of us have had feedback from a lot of people like, when is this going to start? And talking about stopping, I will stop talking now.
So I appreciate that, Mike. And, and, you know, like my colleagues, I don't know if I agree with the numbers or with the sentiment that we can control this or have a say in it, but what I, what that does evoke in me is that we have a challenge with our district. I can tell you that we're committed to serving the students in the tri-town, whether it's here at Masco, hopefully, or if it has to be somewhere else. But it is, in my mind, a frustration, right? It's a challenge, it's a number that we wish wasn't so high. We have had some discussions over why it's high and how can we help that number and serve more of the students? And so I don't want it to be lost that we're having, that we've had some of those discussions. I, I don't agree that we can, that we can say no to them or we can choose where they go. But what we can do is we can continue to have discussions as a school committee on how we can, in a more broad way, support a larger group of the, you know, larger set of needs across the tri-town. So, but it's not lost on me, the frustration that, and the, and the challenge that it presents, so Costa.
You know, my message and I think Middleton's message is that the FY27 budget is going. the FY27 budget is going to be more challenging than the FY09 in the midst of the 2008 recession. Back at that time, you know, Middleton had unused levy capacity. It had substantial new growth. Going into FY27, we have no unused levy capacity and our growth is about 250,000, which is about a third of what is, we usually have. So anything that increases our assessment by more than two and a half percent cannot be funded in the omnibus budget. It will have to go on an overall. That is the message we've also shared with the Middleton Elementary School. And their administration will present to the Middleton School Committee a budget with a two and a half percent increase and will describe what the program would look like. If the school committee finds that unacceptable, it will, to add anything, it will either have to find the funding or know that it's going on an overall. One of the frustrations with school budgets prior to this year, both at the elementary and at Masco, is it starts with adding up the expenses and then sending the taxpayers a bill instead of starting with what's our income? And how can we fit our expenses into that income? That's what each and every one of you do, does for your household. You start with what your household income is and you fit your expenses into that. You do not add up your expenses and go to your boss and say, I need an eight percent raise.
You just, thinking about my own budget process at home sent me off in a different direction, but I appreciate why everybody's in this room tonight. And you all added another meeting to your evening schedule. And so I think where we're getting our feathers ruffled is it was feeling, instead of the spirit in which I know you all came here of collaboration and crisis management, it felt accusatory. And so I appreciate Mike's level setting. Can I finish?
First time anybody's ever said that.
Oh, I appreciate you all the time. So. I think what you're asking also and raising the issue is we are in a situation of crisis management. We see this happening in districts all over the state, all over the country. We see our neighboring districts having to resort to horrific measures that are impacting children. Right? I don't need to give examples. We've all read about them. We don't want that to happen here. There are things that are out of our control and there are things that, you know, we're advocating for at the state level, at, you know, the legislature. We're trying to find other solutions. We're trying to do a little bit of what you were saying is like, okay, we're not just adding up our expenses and asking for a raise, but we are trying to find other funding sources. I think what we need to try to do is dig deep and be more creative than we've ever been. And this collaboration is the spirit of that. We need to, and some solutions are tossed out now and then, but we're all busy and we do start the process too late every year. And it's a little harder to do that. So for example, like you mentioned, the investment in a curriculum that could potentially stem the tide of some of the out of district placements or other resources. Maybe we need to be digging a little deeper and finding more creative solutions to service the children in district and not just say, we can't service the children here. Maybe we need to also think about marketing so that some of the other out of district placements that occur that are presented to us, parents feel more confident and comfortable in what the services are at Masco. I am a parent who has had a child who needed a lot of services here and a lot of people recommended I send my daughter elsewhere. And she was well serviced by this community. Not a lot of people have that faith or know that. I think we have a terrible marketing job here. We don't have great communications. We know we need to improve. I think there are a lot of investments we could make that would pay, that might be a little bit difficult for the budget now, but would pay long-term dividends. I also felt that way about the start time. I think if we had invested the money in shifting the start time years ago, we'd see a lot better mental health in the seventh through 12th grade, but nobody had the appetite for that, particularly the golf team that was worried about not being able to get in 18 holes with a later start time. But I won't go off on that tangent right now. But start time and investing in different busing system, I did a calculation, what, 10 years ago on that? And we would be having a significantly reduced number of out of district placements because a lot of them are mental health related. And we would have a different mental health situation here at Masco had we made that investment. So I think that's what we need to do is invest the time in more creative solutions in understanding each other's numbers and trying to stem the tide of crisis that is upon us. So I appreciate the collaboration, but we, I feel like we almost need like a half-day retreat together with educators who can also present solutions because we are armchair educators in this room. We're not the teachers who are on ground with the students. We're not seeing all of the situ, there's a lot of confidential situations too that we can't solve for at this table. So is there a solution that can be more collaborative, more hands-on, more operational than pointing fingers at we're not cutting enough, we're not, I mean, we don't even have a financial system here at Masco. The elementary school invest in one. We don't have one here. So getting the actual numbers is like pulling teeth. Like we need to, and we're afraid to ask for the investment in a financial system and for what the implementation of a new finance system at the mascanomic level would entail. That would be a great start to invest, to save money in the longer term is going to, we need an investment in time and resources now.
So how you spend, how Masco spends the money is not really my concern. It's the amount of money. Because we can only give you two and a half percent more than we gave you last year. How that's spent, when I was sitting on the school committee, I cared about that. As a select board member, it's really your decision, you know, how to best spend it and, you know, whether it's cutting this staff or adding here or cutting there, however it is. I'm just telling you that anything Middleton has to pay over two and a half cannot be fit into the omnibus budget. And, you know, you, both of you, you know, raised that new curriculum. That points out another part, you know, challenge for Middleton. Since Middleton did not adopt the MBTA 3A zoning, Boxford and Topsfield received a 50% reimbursement through a PRISM grant of those that curriculum Middleton did not precisely because it did not. We have lost other grants because of that. So we are in that even more challenging.
You like undo that? I mean.
Not going to go, trying to go forward. You can, but not look back.
So Masco shouldn't be punished because of Middleton's.
It's still two, two and a half. I think this, you know, these impacts go toward our more of our capital budget than our operating budget. So two and a half percent is two and a half percent. That's what we can raise more from our taxpayers without their consent.
Just, can I just put, just a sec? Just, everybody's talking about two and a half percent. Just to put a number on that. If these, the towns pay about $36 million, two and a half percent is a $900,000 increase. So I think you should guys could keep that number in your head. And that's, that's all I'm saying. $900,000 is two and a half percent.
Now, the struggle you guys have though is 710,000 of that is E and D money that was spent this past year. If you look at your straight operating budget. So you're working a place where 700,000 of your 900,000, if you had a level budget, you have that all.
So you're right about that. And a lot of that has to do with the out of district placements and the delay in the reimbursement timing, I think. I just wanted to correct a couple of things just because I think we're actually quite a bit off on some of these numbers. And just so we're speaking from same baseline. So the student population for 2005, 2025, sorry, actually went up relative to last year and that shows it going down.
That's a type of, no, that's, so these are fiscal, okay. So this year it went up by three to 1503.
Went up by five.
Five to 1503.
And it was 1498 last year, but showing a bigger number.
That's not, I don't think so.
Not seeing October 24th says 15.
No, 2015.
1558.
It's, you transpose something here because it's. You know what this is? These are the FY budgets.
1712 shouldn't be there twice.
Yeah. So for what it's worth though, I mean, the enrollment, enrollment has stopped declining. It's going back up. And as far as out of district placements are concerned, they've stopped increasing and they're going back down. So it was 67 last year. This year it's down to 61. And if you look at the numbers year by year by year, what we're looking at is a COVID bubble working its way through the system. And you can see it in each year. And, you know, there's no guarantees looking forward on anything, of course, because we could hit, get hit with 10 out of district placements. Because many move to the town, they have 20 kids for some reason. Who knows, right? But if you look at historically, the, the 12th graders that are out of district and the age out crowd that's beyond 12th grade, about two thirds of those kids come back the next year. So if you add up, you know, the 12th grade and the, and the overage, the next year, two thirds of that is the out of, is the aged out crowd essentially. And if you look at the way their numbers are going, if the trends continue, in my opinion, we're going to be going down by about five a year. And we should be settling back at where we were historically, given the size of the population we have now, which is about 45 students. It really looks like that when you look at 7th grade, 8th grade and what the numbers have been like. And in talking to the elementary special ed instructor or coordinator, whatever his position is, sorry. So I think that's all great, but the problem is we have this bubble, right? And we have to pay for it every year, matter what. And that's what you're seeing in, in a lot of the numbers over these last few years of budgeting. Not that we, we, you know, we, we love spending more money. It's kind of.
And that's what the, a lot of the override last year was, a significant part was attributed to out of district placement. So if, if what you're saying is true, that means that that's going to be a pressure relief valve this coming years.
It should be. It should be, right? The problem is the cost of tuition are going up. So even with fewer students, you don't know if there's really going to be a big savings or not and, right? So there's challenges there.
Part of that was the permission the state gave two years ago for a massive increase. That's the pain that we had last year. And hopefully that's been attenuated, but we'll, again, we'll see. I think, and so on the out of district, I understand and we can, the trending is something I have no knowledge on, nor do any of us. On the staffing, I'm curious because you, are there concerns on the numbers we have on the staffing?
On the staffing side, if you look over the last 10 years, I, I didn't go back to being of time like, or, or to when Mike was a baby. But let me, let me tell you what the numbers were.
So the previous slide has what we had up.
So this is comparing FY16 to FY25. I haven't updated it for this year. From 16 to 25, we went from 1972 students down to 1544. That's a 21.7% decrease in students. And in that time, we reduced teachers by 17%.
But we're not doing teachers. We're doing staff because.
But you had just asked, you know, you, you said you understood that there will be 100%, right? And, and our point was, what we're talking about here is controlling staffing levels to the right level. And the things we control are the teacher staffing level because all of the special service stuff, for the most part, is required by law. There's, there's not much we can do about it. And I, you know, we, we need to work within the confines of what we're faced with to try and come up with, with a number that everyone agrees can, can live with, I guess, is really the right, right way to put it. But I just want to make sure you understand that this is not about staffing growing out of control because we're hiring a bunch of teachers we don't need. You know, we have all these people that really, really shouldn't be here. I mean, that's not what the numbers are really saying. It's saying that we've got these extra services mandated by law that are driving the numbers. And we're not being reimbursed for them by the state the way that we really need to be. And, and to me, that's where the long-term solution is on this stuff. So not from the towns. It's got to come from elsewhere, but we don't have it yet.
One quick question on that, just to, there was a reclass that you guys did somewhere in that cycle where there was a significant numbers, 10 or 15 or 20 support people went from being general support to being special ed in one year in your towns. Let's see if I can find it.
The seventh.
Was it?
1718.
Sometime in there. Is, is that considered, was that a reclass part of your numbers? It's just the one thing I want to.
It's a data blip that we don't, we have no records for because I think I inquired about it last year.
Are we going to, we're going to get a point and fight over this? Are we going to?
I think you're, that's, you're fair. That's.
Yes, thank you. I mean, I think the, you know, this is, this is unfortunately reminiscent of the discussions that we had last year. And quite honestly, that was a failure. So I don't want to repeat that. And, and how those, those discussions went, what was that? We shared with you our staffing data, which had educators, special ed, you know, every other, you know, category. And no matter how many times we presented it and whatever additional, you know, backup we provided, you know, from my perspective, you continue to do what you're doing today. And with all respect and chat, I respect you beyond.
We want to get to that.
Right. But I just felt that, that it just fell on deaf ears and you kept putting it all together inappropriately. And, and, you know, because if we don't have the special ed staff to treat the, these kids in, 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 in district, guess what? We're going to be doing some more expensive out of district placements. And guess what? That's going to be a hell of a lot more expensive than what we're doing now. So, so, you know, the fact that our population requires a certain amount of, you know, in district support. And arguably, you know, we should have more. But to bundle all that together and make that the, you know, the key point of the discussion of our budget that, you know, population has gone down, total staffing has gone down. What's the problem? That's just not helpful. It's just not helpful.
So I've sat on both sides of this table and I've seen and heard the frustration from both sides about the other side. So I completely understand what's going on here. I think we're getting too much into the weeds on the numbers because we can argue numbers forever. We can argue numbers over, does this one count or this one not count when we talk comparing it to staff and all that? The bigger issue is what discussions and decisions are being made, they're going to make substantial change in the way. And we've had these discussions at the Masco table for years. And there's been a lot of frustration on the Masco school committees that we talk about this and nothing ever happens. And I think this is a year that something needs to happen. I was very optimistic last year, not at this meeting, but in the meetings that followed, where there's some really good discussions by you guys of things that could change and then almost nothing happened. I'm not going to say nothing happened, but almost nothing happened. And I think we need to get to the point, and we're willing to work with you on, try to make some of those things happen. If, if you come back and say, we want to make this major change that saves some money, maybe staffing, maybe it's not, whatever it's in, but you can make those changes. You'll have our support to fight, you know, so, and I'll be honest with you, I was part of the whole school, change of school time thing. And I don't think we fought that enough to get it through. And I think we learned a big lesson, whatever that was.
And I think we learned a big lesson, whatever that was, ten years ago. You know, I think you, we, all of us would be on your side to help you fight to what you need to get. And I, I'll be brutally honest, and this may hurt me in the long run, I was sitting on this side with all those parents and teachers last year when we were talking about music and performing arts. So I was in the middle of them, I wasn't protected like you guys were. I heard a lot of stuff going on there, but I was willing to fight those people, that, that, that side of the argument, to get something done that was going to be better for the, for the long run. I think we need to stand up and fight for some big things. And I think you'll get more of us on your side if we see that you're actually doing that. I don't know, these guys agree, but that's how I feel.
Mike wants to go, Melissa and Adrian.
He's a really smart, smart guy, so I agree with that, that you said. I also want to, and it's nearly as important, what Dan just said, is, you know, and I'm from a business background, yada, yada. And, you know, we, we all know this fixed in variable, that's why you can't reduce staff and all that. But I look, and in my mind, I keep on thinking, is from, I think, two thousand and eight, there's like six hundred less students walking around in towels. That's twelve hundred less legs, twelve hundred less shoes, getting things dirty. Six hundred less potential people going to the cafeteria, six hundred less this, six hundred less that. And I, I don't see six hundred less people going to guidance. But I see all this, a huge, you know, almost thirty percent reduction in that activity, yet this, how we deal with that and the expense that deal with that haven't changed. And I understand everybody has their whole little kingdom and life to move, whatever you want to call. But I think this where Chris and every, everybody here is pretty bright. And if they look at it, you look at it with fresh eyes, saying like, well, you know, the cafeteria used to serve a thousand people, now it's serving seven hundred. What does that mean? What is that? I mean, I don't know, maybe you, you need whatever, the same staffing. But I don't know if it's been looked at, I don't, I just don't know, but I never hear anything about it. So I probably wrongly assume it's not looked at, but I don't think it's looked at that closely or more recently. And that's, again, as I said, this is very minor from what Dan said, but I, I think it's part of what Chris and other folks have said about taking a fresh set of eyes and looking at that. That's all.
So.
Yeah, so I, something that Dan said sort of struck a thing, and I think we all have to take a step back. I appreciate that you recognize that we did a lot of work last, last spring. And ultimately, it was our decision to determine what budget will best serve our students. And we made that, we made that after two months of budget work. And we ultimately felt that what our budget was would serve Masco students and our communities the best. Recognizing also, because I know that I always get mad at Bill for, for taking sort of more of a conservatively financial approach sometimes. But that's okay, like, I'm recognizing that he recognizes the population in our town who, who don't have children here and.
And I'll sit.
And we need to be mindful of them. So I appreciate that perspective, but we did the work. And ultimately, as a school committee, you guys are looking at raw numbers. We're looking at the fact that since two thousand and eight, education has changed immensely. Our students have different needs, our, our, the, the services that we're required to provide are different. So taking those numbers, like, isolated in silos, for our purposes, we've done the analysis, and we're saying, towns, we believe this is going to serve our students the best. And we, we recognize the numbers, and we know that we all have hard jobs, and we're all doing this, not because we're getting rich out of sitting at these tables, because none of us certainly are. And, but I just want to be mindful that we have to also recognize that we're not going against you, and we're not, it's not like we're not thinking or trying to think outside of the box. We are just trying to do what's best for our students and our school. And our, and ultimately, when our schools succeed, our communities succeed, and we can bring in more tax revenue, so.
Yeah, Adrian, Chris.
Okay, so in the spirit of collaboration, bringing forward creative solutions, how many of you were here on the night of October twenty third for the chapter seventy listening session?
I.
Thank you. For anybody that went, listened, brought a testimony, if you guys haven't had an opportunity to listen to some of those or participate, please do, because as the towns, the reason you feel such a burden is because public education is underfunded. And they've made promises and have not fulfilled them for year over year over year. So we're chronically underfunded despite what's promised legislatively. And if you can't participate in any of the remaining ones, there is a virtual public comment on November eighteenth, and I'm happy to send the link to all of you so that you can either submit testimony or at least listen to the other districts and what their, their towns and, and their school districts are dealing with too. Because I think it's incredibly informative and helpful as member towns for you guys to be aware of all the challenges, right? We have challenges at Masco, we're doing all right, though, compared to a lot of other districts.
So to, to answer, to respond to that.
Yeah.
My suggestion to the FinCom, to this group, when we're putting together these guidelines, is that the two and a half percent number increase is not on your total budget, it's on your community contribution. Because that's us. If you can do things outside of the community contribution, that's outside of the two and a half percent. So if chapter seventy goes up, you get all of that, it's not like you only get, you know, it reduces our contribution. We're trying, I, I suggest this, and I think they all both agreed, supported, that we only want to look at that one line, not the big number. There's a difference there, we've always, I think, I started, I always looked at the big, the big number. We're saying, no, only the community contribution line. So there's other things you can do. When I sat on that side, we always said, well, let's increase user fees, which will lower community contribution costs, and that puts the burden on only some parents, not all parents. Now we're saying, two and a half percent is two hundred percent community contribution. If you want to increase user fees, you get all that money, doesn't change our number. But I, to me, that was a fair thing, and we all agreed.
I didn't.
And I just think that helps you and answers some of those questions.
Adding to it, it also gets you out of the enrollment number confusion, that's our problem to solve. So the fact that numbers split from here to here to here, that's for us to solve. Like, that by doing that, if Topseal's numbers, which are going to go up again this year just because of the five year swing, which actually has benefited us for the last couple of years, we're going to get another small bump instead of the massive bump we would have gotten three years ago. But we're going to get another bump that's going to, we're going to have to find a way to absorb that, above the two and a quarter. But that's our, that's our problem to solve. And will probably be like last year or something, that we have to put on an override that we explain explicitly.
Is due to.
As due to the enrollment number.
Shift, enrollment.
And that's something we can speak. There is one ask I do have on the next page, or this, which is separate of the budgets, which is timing of the budgets. If I can get that, it's a top one there. Asking, the law says you have to give us the budget no later than forty five days beforehand. The problem is, we also have a law that says we have to mail the, the warrant thirty days beforehand. And we have to get it printed before that. So what it puts outside, if you deliver on the eighteenth, we have one meeting to take your budget, elementary schools' budget, and the remaining budgets from the towns, put them all together in one meeting. And in that same meeting, write our letter, and in that same meeting, approve it. It's not enough, so we're respectfully asking to, just for a week, an extra week, if you can try to get us a budget on the eleventh, please. Because otherwise, we literally, we get the, you have your meeting on the eighteenth, our meeting is on Monday, the twentieth.
Exactly.
Twenty. Yeah, and you, I mean, you've seen that, and there, it's not only that it's fine, well, it's there till one in the morning, that's, sorry, that's.
Not.
But it's, you're trying to make decisions six hours in on something that you've had finalized for a day or two, a couple of days. It's not a good decision making process, so it's a big ask.
I just wanted to clarify, when you, you're asking for an increased amount, it's not per town, it is the overall assessment you're asking for.
Yeah.
Right? And is it two point five, what you said, like, because I've heard two point two five thrown out.
So what?
Right?
Yeah.
That's going to translate into more than two point five for Topseal, of course.
Yeah, yeah. And we recognize that traditionally, we, all three towns both tried to work on this together and realized we're in slightly different places, right? In terms of the tightness of the budgets and where we are. And if something comes back to us, if our numbers, we find in the coming months that our numbers are off, we have to pivot to that. Meaning, if we find that our estimates are optimistic or conservative, we have to pivot to that, and that will reflect it. But the goal is, we're, we're going to have to do an override for anything over two and a quarter. They're going to have to do an override for anything over two and a half of that number.
Chris, did you want to jump in?
I was just going to make a point, because looking at the numbers, just so we're clear, because I know you're saying, the general education staff here has gone down over the past decade by sixteen point eight percent, cracking close to the seventeen point eight percent. Where the overall numbers are not aligning with what you would expect is that we have added thirteen special education staff to serve people who were staying in district. So I just want to make that note while we're talking about all the numbers. I think that alleviates a little bit of the mystery. But I do want to just reiterate my desire to find additional time that isn't a late night where we could all come together and think about creative ways to find new, new opportunities for saving money or making investments that will have a longer term savings implications for us.
Thanks. Jeff?
Just a couple of small points.
Yes, you do. Kind of things would you like? Why don't you just decide something tonight? I'm sorry to say something like that, but why don't you do it tonight?
I don't think there's anything on the table tonight, actually.
No, any other business. And I'm just saying, just, I mean, every, everybody here.
There are ways you can AI, they reduce an administrative position, right? Are we using AI for forecasting, analysis, you know, predictive energy management, doing enrollment numbers? Like, you know, are there ways that we could use AI for note taking in meetings and, like?
Personally, this sort of brainstorming conversation just isn't a productive use of.
For tonight, right?
Well, setting up, setting up a time and stuff, not you now, but setting up some sort of.
Just said.
I didn't understand your question, I apologize.
I know my kids tell me I don't explain myself very well.
Listen to your comments.
What I meant was, why don't you, at this meeting, decide what you were going to do to set up some sort of structure to talk about this? I mean, I think that would be great. I mean, I don't want to be part of it, because you guys know, but I think it'd be wonderful. And I know that, I don't know, but I'm guessing everybody in this room, or everybody in school committee, has certain ideas that are probably really a little bit out of the box or whatever, and make a bigger box or smaller box to think out of the box. And whatever that analogy, I don't know. But I think it's, it's something that I've heard in the last, I think I've been going to meetings off and on for five or ten years, and I've heard about this, but I've yet to hear about going off, you know, off in a corner for a couple of weeks in a row, for a day, whatever, just to get something done. And I, at least when I've done it in my business life, some really great things have happened. And so if you could schedule something like that, it might be really a good thing. It might not, but it might.
Mike's got some more work to do. Jack, I've got some more homework.
So, I mean, why don't we think, I'm going to give the mic to Jeff for a second here, but why don't we think about what that could look like? And see if we can come to a closure on it in the next, you know, ten, fifteen minutes. Doesn't have to be perfect, right? We can, we can adjust it, but let's see if we can leave here with it.
I'm just following the same point, you know, I think Dan made a great point, you know, structurally there. You know, I think we, I've been pushing this since I started, a five or ten year vision of what the school would look like. I mean, the challenge we have is that the budget is year to year and getting the time to do that, but just a level set. Whatever we do for that, you know, if we decide we want to change the structure of the school tomorrow, that's not going to be affecting the budget for this year. You know, the budget is going to be the budget, correct?
Right, I think that if there's, if, if changes are made that show that's going to result in something down the road.
I, I think that's definitely something.
Instead of only looking at what we can do in the short term, because we'll never get to those big long term savings.
That's one of my frustrations, but just for people in the room to hear that, you know, we could change the whole structure tomorrow, and the budget for this year is not going to be impacted. This is all long term strategy, which is probably due, but. That outside of laying people out, that's basically the lever we have. As you all know, you know, somewhat of your issue, or your challenge is that the majority of our budget is contracted in place in infrastructure. So that's why I get a little frustrated when I hear this, enrollment's going down, the staff is the same. We did an analysis last year of student to teacher ratios, and they haven't moved all that much. The building does not change size by the number of people over here. So Mike, to your point, like the cafeteria, and the six hundred people less, you still need the same amount of cooks, and the same amount of cleaners. There's a minimum staff that has to stay regardless of student population, and that's always going to be there. And we're also contracted into electric increases, healthcare increases, the same increases the town is facing as well. And, you know, as much as the budget is here, the amount of space we had to operate is really, what, twenty, twenty five percent, like, you know, the overall budget? So, you know, a small impact has, is leveraged, so we're talking huge, huge impacts to teachers and staff, rent cut. And that's where I find it frustrating, where we get these kind of analyses that show you have all this money to play with, and we really don't, we have.
We're not, so I'll speak from, I'm not saying you have money to play with, I'm saying there are hard decisions that, to be frank, the same conversation happened with someone different seven years ago with me, if sitting here. You know, it's just, and that was when we were going from two thousand down to eighteen hundred. And so respectfully, it's hard decisions one way or the other, and you've chosen to make them in a certain way. The problem is, I mean, the last thing I'm going to say and leave it is that Topseal, the last override last year passed by forty two votes. It's tight, and that's, that's kind of the town saying, we're here. You know, I mean, think about forty two people, that's, that's just, that puts you, imagine if that happened, and now you have a budget that it doesn't get through, and what you all have to do at that point. So we need to work together on that aspect and try and.
Just my last point, this is not a Masco issue, this is a national education funding issue. You know, chapter seventy is, is broken, we're not getting, same from the states. Inflation is out of control, and, you know, this cost of actually maintaining, teaching students is going, is going up in general. So, you know, your pain point is the same pain point we have. You know, like Melissa said, you know, I'm not willing to sacrifice student quality just to, you know, to avoid an override.
So, so when we think about it, we also have to think about the fixed income, people that actually are the ones that are funding this school.
Think about what your property values happen with school collapses.
The funding, the, the resource that funds the school is the person whose family. My daughter's been out of school for four years. We went to Topseal and for, for seven years, from fifth grade to twelfth grade, she did. I still owe money, and I, my taxes are a little higher. I still owe money to the schools for my one child, half of the school submit thing. Because, you know, it's not till someone moves there, till their kids are, first kid is twelve years out, is eight years out of school, before the average taxes are covering, have paid off what the cost of the school was. So if the parents, so this is a cycle that if the parents don't stay, yeah, we'll get our enrollment back up, because everyone that comes in is going to, but everyone that comes in is going to cost more. Or we're going to be having thirty one thousand dollar this year, it'd be thirty one thousand dollar average expenses. That's what the average, the total, or, I'm sorry, twenty four thousand, because of the town's number of that, would be the average taxes issue.
There's a, there's a couple of folks that haven't had a chance.
God, sorry.
Night, to give them a mic, I'd like to give Bill the mic one more time at the end, just to share his last thought, and then I might summarize, so.
Yeah, and we have no idea, is this the end of your presentation?
It's the.
Just wondering whether we were a third in.
Oh, no, the, it's it. End with the ass.
Bill. Just real quickly, the, the, you know, I, I remember quite clearly when, when this, our second override last year passed by just forty one votes, obviously concerned about that. And, and certainly view that as a, you know, warning that, that, you know, there's some limit to this. But there's another way to look at it, which is subsequently, it was passed by the other two towns. But there's another way to look at it, which is subsequently it was passed by the other two towns. And what would have happened if the other two towns had passed it and Topsfield hadn't? What would have been the implications to Topsfield at that point? There would have been, they would have either had to have a, another town meeting or just go ahead and make some other substantial budget cuts. So it's, it's a cautionary tale that cuts both ways, in my opinion. I just wanted to, so when you talk about it, one, asked by forty-two votes, that's only twenty-one people. Because if twenty-one of those forty-two people voted the other way, it wouldn't have passed. So it's not forty-two people, it's twenty-one people. Not, twenty-one, twenty-two, however you want to cut the number, but it's, it means it's a much smaller number than that, so it's even scarier.
I think what I hope we take away from this though is the three towns are coming as one. And I think that there is, because all three towns are hearing the same thing in their towns. It's not because Topsfield, oh, they can't, everyone else here because Topsfield's complaining. All three towns are feeling the same pressure, stress and impatience or, or resistance to continued overrides. And, or, I'm sorry, not even continue, continued tax increases that we had. Our taxes went up a ten, almost ten percent this year.
I was just going to just make one final comment on to what Chris had said about having a communications problem and sort of a crisis management situation that we've been in the last couple of years. Me, I'm a special ed parent, I have two boys that are on the spectrum. And with the out of district placement numbers, for me, I know one of my goals is to get communication into the elementary schools sooner, because as a special ed parent, the reason you may go out of district is because maybe you don't have confidence, for whatever reason it may be, in the school or in the town, for, for whatever reason. So if we have a communication problem, we need to, and I want that to be one of my goals and one of our goals, is to get our special ed department communicating into the elementary schools sooner and earlier so that families feel good about what we have here, because we do have great things here. I mean, I have a son on the spectrum who is doing the afternoon excels program. I never even thought he could do that. He's playing old school video games like Atari and Super Mario Kart and things like that. I never thought he would be able to do that or that Masco had that until like three weeks ago. I had no idea that Masco offered that. So we do have a communication problem, so I, I know that we are working on it. And that is one of the goals that I know we've had, we've talked with Brad Denton, to do that and to help that number if we can. It's just one tiny piece of a giant puzzle, but I know that is a goal that we're trying to do is to get confidence back in the elementary school families so that they will stay here. And maybe that number, hopefully that number will go down for the right reasons. So I just, I don't know if that helps, but that is something that we are working on and that we, we know we have to keep pushing for, so.
It was me. I got Trevor, Chuck, is it, I'm sorry, and Lisa, so if it's okay, we'll put Trevor, Lisa and Chuck, is that okay?
Thank you, Matt. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and thank you all for coming. Sorry, I can't be there, I had sinus surgery today, so nobody wants to see my face. But thank you for all being there. One point that I think it's important we addressed early on and was a big point of confusion for us last year, having learned only in the second week of March that the towns were no longer funding us based off the previous year's member town assessment and rather the total budget itself, that the two and a half we were given was off the total budget and not the town's assessment from the previous year. So Middleton last year, it was any dollar we spent over the previous year was placed on an override. Is that the case again this year? It wasn't sounding like that, based off what Costa was saying, but out in the room. So Jess, can someone make that clear?
The, uh, last year we're talking about a, a budget increase. And because of the way the parts of, some of the budget is based on the five-year enrollment average, some is split by the net school spending. And because that, those two formulas worked so much to the benefit of Middleton, a two and a half budget increase resulted in, would have resulted in virtually no assessment increase to Middleton. You know, what we are saying now is two and a half on the community assessment. So we don't know how those two parts of the formula will work either to the benefit or to the harm of each town. I think they will come, each town will be much closer to, if the assessment increases two and a half, I think each town will be close to that two and a half. Topsfield will once again be a little higher. But, you know, if the overall community assessment increases by two and a half percent and the two formulas result in Middleton's assessment increase going up two point six percent, we will do everything we can to fit that point one percent in the budget because it doesn't make a lot of sense to have an override for such a small number. But if we can't fit it, that's a different story. And if it goes up more than two and a half percent, the overall community assessment, you know, will put the, you know, the size of, the override will be accordingly larger.
Can I say, I, I appreciate what you said. I'm not sure if I, from what I can understand, if, if in fact the towns pay about eighty percent of the budget, say thirty-six million dollars or whatever, okay, rounding. If it's a two and a half percent increase on the towns and the other nine million dollars does not increase, that means that on a forty-five million dollar budget, it's only, we're asking you to stay have a two percent increase in your budget, if the other numbers don't. And that's a, that's going to be incredibly difficult to you guys, especially since, and I, I can understand why you did it, but taking all that money out of E and D, taking a, a non-recurrent, financially it's not, it was not a, a long-term great move, but I can, it was very expeditious and all that. But if in fact, there's no increase in, God knows what's going to happen with chapter seventy. And I was at that meeting and I, I didn't see anything much useful coming out of it for me, just words. And I think that's, when I look at two percent increase, I, I do not envy your position about looking into that. Unless there's some sort of miraculous increase in funding on the other nine million dollars. I think, I think that was his question, but I'm not sure that.
I, I think, the way I look at it is, I, I try to make it easy by saying, just look at that two and a half, that community contribution line, that's what you've got to work with. You can play with the other numbers to make that come out right. But then after that, there's two different things that happen on the town side. One is how the, uh, not, what's, not the word allocation, the contribution, like the town spreadsheet comes out with, you know, so there's a bunch of variables that change things and then come up with three town numbers. And then the towns have to take that number, put it into their budget process that has, you know, state money coming in and new growth and all these other things that they can do to see where they can fund everything. So just like you need to look at how you can fund everything through community contribution or other sources, the towns have to do the same thing. And then we have to figure out individually if there's overrides anywhere, town government, elementary or Masco. So there's a lot of other variables that happen. One of the reasons, I would like the information a little bit earlier, because it just, there's a lot of pieces that have to happen there. But if you guys can concentrate on that community contribution line, that's all you need to worry about, won't worry about the rest. Does that make sense?
Talking about the town assessments, not.
Tech town assessments.
Because when I hear community contribution, I'm thinking about chapter seventy funding and the way that all.
You can't, no. Community assessment.
To be clear, it's not the individual towns' community assessments, it's the sum of the.
It's the sum of those three, it's that one line, second last line on the budget line.
Yes.
At the bottom, yeah. Right, Lisa, please, thank you for your patience.
Well, man, now I feel like we're taking a step back because my question, my, um, point of order was relevant a while ago. But I just wanted to say, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but you kind of shook your head, was when you were looking at the people that the school employs and who we could be getting rid of. Dan, what you were talking about, the people that run the lunchroom, right? But you, right, but correct me if I'm wrong, because you kind of shook your head, we don't actually employ.
We outsource all that.
That, those are.
Not our, I, I understand Mike's example, but that's why, that's, that's why I didn't pipe up, but we don't, we don't employ cafeteria workers.
It's a contract.
Contract.
And so I, and I.
Small contract, if, if there was.
The lines would be down the hall.
But just, you know, if, if the volume decreased substantially.
Yeah, it's, it actually, when the lunches went free, we more than doubled the amount of lunches we served per day. Because the state, the state's paying for those lunches. So we went from a pretty small use to, as I said, it was two plus times the amount of lunches served every day.
The other thing I want to say is, and, and Joe kept saying it last year too, was we have a teachers in the next couple of years that are going to be retiring. So there is a very, there is money there. And what did you kept saying, the pain is short-lived? Like, it's.
Self-correct.
Yeah, say again, yes. So right now it's hurting, but the people that could be, end up losing their jobs are those teachers that we want to retain that we will need in the next three to five, six, seven years because those higher paid teachers are going to be retiring and leaving. So that bubble is that the salaries, that cap is going to be coming down. So we need to keep that in mind too, that that's not going to be as painful, hopefully, again, in the next five or so years.
Now, the trends are working in our favor, but we can't take advantage of them for another four or five years probably, and then this gets easier.
Michelle Marcy, your link's luck board, said earlier, but just to get it back out there. I think some of the information that you're saying right now would, just would be helpful to have. I mean, I think that's what the importance of this meeting is, is that you can share the information so that we have better information to make decisions, you have better information from our side to make decisions. And some of the information that you're saying now, I would love to see that, just, I love to.
Yeah, I shared it last year during, during the budget process, but I.
Shouldn't finish. We have sixteen, seventeen people sitting at the table.
I'm happy to send it to you. We did present it at town meetings last year, talking about teacher salaries and where we were on, on the pay scales and how many people were over here versus over, I've got all the information. I'll send it to you. And the out of districts stuff is really, really new. I mean, we got the, the latest numbers, I think it was last week, can't remember when I was away or here in town. I think it was the end of, the, the middle of last week or early last week when we got the newest numbers. And it's the first time we've seen it go down. And I've got six years worth of data going back, where you can actually watch the numbers moving from grade to grade. And you can see the spike started because of COVID. The sixth grade class, the seventh grade class, the fifth grade class, all of a sudden it went up. And then a couple of years later, boom, eighth grade, seventh grade, they've returned to where they were historically. So I feel confident about that myself, but, you know, there could be another pandemic around the corner. You can't, you can't bank on it until it's here, right? I'll send you what I have.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chuck, please.
Thank you. When I came in, it was a slide on, on out of district placements. So I know it was a topic you took up and I appreciate your comments about initiatives in that regard. One of the questions I've always had was, you have sixth graders that are going out of district that you never see. You never interview each other. And you have six schools of sixth graders that you find out are out of district, that you then have to pay for. It seems to me that operationally, there should be some way that your special ed department, special ed director or administration can reach out to those, I guess, three sixth grades in the three towns and find out if those pupils and parents have an interest in interviewing here at Masco. The reason I bring that up is I am aware of a, of parents who are going to send their sixth grader to not a district placement and decided to speak with the administration at Manchester High School. And after they did speak with the administration in Manchester High School, they realized very quickly that Manchester High School was a better fit. But I, I can't, I, I can't be sure it was a ninth grader or a seventh grader, quite honestly. I don't know how that, how that's high school structured or, or not. But that student and parents decided that Manchester's program is going to be better than the out of district program, had a tremendous savings to the district. And that student graduated from that program. So I, it's, if we're looking for sums of pockets of money, I think we have to look at operations and how we may be able to amend those operations to take advantage of something like that. I, I don't know, I, I don't know how you do it, but I appreciate your comments on it.
Yeah, no, I think that's.
Worthwhile. It would be really nice if, if all of the administrations of all the, uh, the cities and towns were able to get the state board of education to say, before you can send your pupil out of district, you must interview with the local district. And, and maybe some of those out of district placements will remain. I don't know the laws, but I'm just throwing that out. I don't know if you can comment on that.
There's, there's a requirement for a team meeting every year, so there, so that does happen. But once a student is in and out of district placement, the parent has to agree to move them back. And generally, that does not happen.
I was thinking before they moved them in.
Yeah, it's, a lot of times, because I said that, yeah, there is no requirement that there's a meeting that, that takes place with the school before, there's a unilateral placement is what we call it.
Mike, got a comment? There's, there's been some discussion with members of Triton Elementary School Committee about trying to have more cooperation on this topic. So, you know, we talked about having this off-site brainstorming session and I'm sure that would be a topic that, that would come up.
My simplicity, it doesn't seem really difficult to have someone from Masco talk with someone from each of the elementary schools. And really, I mean, just call up and what do you have, send me, you know.
We do.
Like, it seems incredibly easy, but then again, I think most things are incredibly easy.
Like, we do, we do that all year. That process.
Yeah.
We're going back and forth.
Starting in high school knowing, you know, it, it were just, there was nothing that could be done. But I, you know, I'm sorry, Joe.
I would say that there probably isn't the level of coordination from kindergarten through twelfth grade, right? Across all of the elementary schools with Masco here. I think Masco talks to like the fifth graders and the sixth graders, sixth graders mostly. But I mean, there might be fourth graders and third graders that are in need of specific services that we don't have. And if we can put them in place within the next, that, you know, by the time they get to seventh grade, they can stay in district. But it might take longer than one year to put that in place. And if you wait until they're in sixth grade, it's too late, right? So that kind of coordination is, is the kind of stuff that I think people are talking about, so.
So, uh, there's only a couple of the people that haven't had a chance to share any thoughts. I don't know, and if you'd like to share anything or John, if you have any thoughts that come to mind.
No, no, it's, it's been said.
Not at this point.
Okay, all right. Uh, I'm just going to share a couple of thoughts before we wrap up this topic. And you guys are welcome to stick around, we're going to go through the, through the enrollment report after this. But first, thank you, thank you guys for coming, thank you for preparing material, even if we disagreed on the material. Thank you for preparing material, even if we disagreed on the material. Thank you. I know it takes time to do that and process the numbers and everything like that and synthesize, you know, your perspectives on it. I will say, even, you know, if we disagree on the numbers, we, we see the trends too. And we, we know, right? We know our enrollment numbers have gone like this and they're starting to come back up, right? We may disagree on how we've handled educators or the staff in general, but, you know, we, we know what we've done. We know the challenges of the town too, the towns too, right? We know it hurts when we raise our hand and say yay and support an override because we know what it means to our own taxes. We, we feel the pain, we understand. We also know that to get to two and a half percent, it's going to take some drastic measures, right? And I, I don't know if I can sit here and honestly tell you that we're going to get to two and a half percent. But we've asked the DCI to look at a few drastic things, some more drastic than others. I don't think we're ready to discuss that quite yet. But, you know, trust us that we're of the same mindset. I will make the most uncomfortable comment of the night and say that Mike will not be here next year and we will have a replacement next year. And me personally, I'm aware that I, I don't know how many drastic measures I want to take with an incoming new superintendent, right? I know for me, and I won't talk about my interview questions, but I am very curious to know how the next superintendent is going to archetype this building for academic success and financial efficiency, right? So we're doing, the DCI is doing what they can do with the chips that they have right now. It's certainly a multi-year process, but it's not lost on us that we have a problem this year and we need to work our butts off to do the best that we can to, for the taxpayers of the Triton. My last comment is I love where Chris went earlier. Thank you, Chris, right? I know that we went sideways a little bit there. I don't think there was any ill intent or anything like that on either, on anybody at the table, right? So, Chris, I really appreciated what you said about collaboration. I'm not going to drag this on. Mike, I really appreciated the, the idea of trying to walk right, walk away tonight. I would ask you guys, the school committee and the select board and FinCon members, if you'd like to send me your ideas on how we may have a bit of an offsite on this topic. And I would propose, you know, at our next meeting, we close on this topic two weeks from now. It doesn't have to be a long discussion, but if you can send me your ideas between now and then, I'd appreciate it. Otherwise, thank you, guys, again, I appreciate.
One question, which I should have asked you earlier. All separate of operating budget, you, we got, you got the, the funding for the thing. Could you give, someone give, if today's not the date, just give us a sense of what you think's coming this year for the building support? And if you don't have it, we understand it's a, it's a last week type of thing.
So there's a couple of, we, we refer to these things as type three projects. So smaller dollar item projects. One would be improvement of the softball field and the track. We've got a problem with title line compliance there and potentially ADA issues as well. Uh, that's one. Second is, let's see, other small project, I can't think what it is, but there's one other.
So there was.
There's a small one, right? Then there's, there's obviously the turf field, but we don't think the turf field will be coming to, to, to town meeting this year. Because, well, we don't know, I should say, we don't know. And the reason why I say that is because the Masco Sports Committee needs time to raise money once it get, you know, once the plans get approved. And so I don't think we can sit here and, and say that they're going to have the chance to raise as much money as they can by January when we're, we're trying to put our budget together. So my guess is that might still be another year out if it gets approved and everyone agrees to go forward with it. And then there's HVAC and the roof. And I don't know if it's been really reported yet, but we're getting invited into the MSBA program. And step one of that is actually pretty low dollars. It's just a designer and an OPM, which is something that we tried to get out of the towns two years ago.
But just for a schematic.
Yeah, but this is a schematic study. So it's, it's low dollars this, this year to start, we believe.
Which will be reimbursed a certain percentage of that.
I, I know why I thought there were two projects because initially we were looking at improvements to the track and the softball field as separate things. It's kind of all just going to be one.
And ten of those courts.
And the tennis courts are getting rolled in as well. But it's not going to be, you know, $10 million. It's going to be one, maybe. Who knows? We don't know.
You don't know.
You don't know.
It's not the 50 million.
No.
Fifty. Yeah, it's not one or whatever. Thank you.
At, at some point, yeah, at, at a certain level, maybe all three towns can fit their share into their, you know, a lot of times free cash or whatever, but once it gets beyond a certain amount, it, it can't be done that way because the capacity's not there.
And that's, you know, it's the MSBA. I mean, that's, that's, that's a project they probably want to bond anyway and roll it all into, you know, roll the bands into one bond after, you know, when you're in construction and completed.
The MSBA, just as a reminder, right? We did get invited to it. We get invited to the first phase as we were talking about schematics. The expectation is we will continue to get invited to it as we go face to face to face. But it is a face to face to face process, and so we count on now is the initial phase.
And the MSBA has agreed to start the clock for us the first week in March, the 90-day clock, so that we do not have to have a special town meeting to appropriate the money for schematic. So it'll just happen, it'll should be, that should be on the warrant for town meeting. And then the, the interesting thing is, Jeff's not here tonight to say this. He spent yesterday morning on the phone with MSBA. We're in the first group of heat pumps. So they don't have a lot of answers to our questions at this point. And there's a lot of, we're figuring this out too, because, you know, we have to have a number, we have to have a estimate, estimate for a construction number to then go work backwards on percentages to say what, you know, would be the schematic and OPM dollar amount. That's something that is, you know, usually they base that on past projects, which they don't have any at this point. So we're, you know, we're going to keep working with them. The nice things is we also, as part of last year's capital budget, did commission a study for heat pump conversion anyway. We went ahead and did that, so we should have that study back in the next month or so. I think more, probably closer to January, that'll give us a ballpark figure to start working with. So it'll be another data.
It's exciting. Will he give us a higher percentage since we're the guinea pig on heat pumps?
Yeah, I wish. They haven't even told us a percentage yet, you know. I hope it's 40, which, which would be really nice. I mean, we're talking about tens of millions of dollars in reimbursement if this, if that's the case, so.
Congratulations for being invited in.
Yeah, yeah.
It's great.
It's great.
Still have the parallel study going on as well.
Yeah.
Does it share other, other opportunities?
Thank you. All right, now that I've lost quick control of the agenda. Take that away. Uh, we'll go right into the enrollment report.
All right, so this, the first slide in this deck shows the resident enrollment distribution by town. And this, these are the numbers that we use to build the portionment numbers for, for the budget, for the FY27 budget. If you look all the way to the right, the three asterisks at FY27, see that Boxford is at 37.47%, which is an increase of 0.23%. Middleton will be at 32.33%, which is a decrease of 0.76. And Topsfield will be at 30.2%, which is an increase of 0.54%. So these are the, that's the five-year rolling averages of the enrollment numbers as, as you can see them a process. I'm going to get some slides out of order here.
Detention.
But going back to this first one, so the October 2025, October 1 number, there were 1,503 resident students enrolled in Mascanomit, slightly up from October 2024. This is, this next slide is the total enrollment distribution by grade. So this actually includes the non-resident faculty students, there are three of those, 52 non-resident choice students and one foreign exchange student in the October 2025 numbers. And as you can see there, from October 24 to October of 2025, we are actually up 15 students, so 1%. And a five-year change, a decrease of 9.7% and 168 students. This is the one. Actually, I wanted to look at a little bit more. This is the, back to the resident enrollment by town. So you can see for the current, for the October 1, 2025, Boxford is at 562 students. Middleton is at 475 and Topsfield is at 466. Boxford is a decrease of one student from last year. Middleton is an increase of nine and Topsfield is a decrease of three. So we net out a plus five, that's the 14, or 1503, where last year was 1498. See, trying to see increase of one faculty student and actually nine choice students increase year over year. We looked at that one. This next one looks at some of those, you know, we reconcile the enrollment numbers from year to year. So, you know, so we had the 1,544 students in October 2024. You know, 1559 in October of 2025. You can see the change, the deltas there by grade. So we had 225 students graduate. We added in 279 students for the resident grade seven. We added 10 students in grade seven for school choice, six students in grade nine for school choice. We had eight stu-, or 52 students transfer out of eighth grade in, between that eight to nine transition. And then three other students that moved or, or left the district in other ways. And you can see the eighth grade transfer, the breakdown there, 30 of the students went to Essex Tech, two to St. John's Prep, five to Pingree, three to the Governors, and then 12 one-offs to other, all other places.
This has a good question.
Yep.
Our limit was 10.
10.
Was there a waitlist for, do you know?
Don't know about grade seven. I'd have to find out. I think, I think we did get, I know we had to do a lottery, so we got more than, we had more than 10 applications. I don't know if we finished up with a waitlist. Are you asking about grade nine?
No, seven, I was just, because there, there was the 10 and I was just curious if.
Yeah, we, we, we hit the max, so, and as I said, I know if we receive more applications than seats that we have, we have to do a lottery. And so we did do that, so I know we had more than 10 applications. So that anybody on, anybody who was not in that initial 10 would have, would have been put on the waitlist. And so the total, yep, just back on.
Foreign exchange student, what, how, how is that handled? It's just free?
Yeah, well, it's, it's part of the host family's taxes.
Good point, all right.
Yeah. Here for, should have talked weeks.
Should.
I've been all year foreign exchange student, right?
All year?
All year long?
I believe so, yes.
Do we do such a thing?
We do.
We do?
We have one right now.
Where are they from?
France. France.
Okay. Good to them.
Uh, let's see, and then this is a projection for October of 2026. And this is based on the straight line data that we use, that we're looking at, you know, going from 1559 to 1545, you know, a, a 1% decrease of about 14 students. So again, looking at relatively flat enrollments year to year from '25 to '26 in the projections.
What's your, what does the number you plug between eight and nine?
Uh, what did they plug?
Do you put a formula in there?
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I'd have to look at, so it's 273 in grade eight to 228. So we're looking at about 55. You know, it's between 40 and 55 is usually what we, 45 and 55 is usually what we get. So, so 45.
We're going to find a slide.
But last year, there was a very small senior class, 225, right? This year it's 270, so you're, you're losing 45 more students, no matter what.
Right, but then we're looking at the, the grade seven numbers coming in.
So we got a big sixth grade coming.
Yeah, I have to pull it back to the, those are here. Grade six, there's 286 residents. And then generally, we'll, we generally add about 15 students coming in to grade seven from grade six. Although the interesting thing was this year, we did not. We didn't hit that number for some reason. But in the past years, you know, it's been about a 14 to 15 student increase. You know, there, so that's, that's the number there that we're using.
All right, let's make up a few minutes here. The process for filling vacant boxes for the committee seat. Process for filling vacant committee seat. And the reason why we're talking about this is because I don't think that we've been doing it right.
That's, so.
Yeah, because this, just these pieces are actually from, let me share, sorry. Are from our regional agreement. Section 1C is called vacancies. And then school committee policy BBE, which is unexpired term fulfillment. Both are relating to filling vacant seats on the school committee.
So Matt, in what way do you think we haven't done this?
Mike, would you mind summarizing?
So, yeah, my, I have not been involved in this in prior, with prior seats. I mean, the, the school committee members took, took on, took this on themselves. And I, somebody have to correct me if I'm incorrect on my understanding of what happened was that the school committee would solicit applications and then the school committee would interview those people on their own from that town. and then the school committee would interview those people on their own from that town.
Not the entire school committee?
No, the, the members, so that it's, this, this process is run by the, the remaining members from that town.
And their select.
And their select board. My understanding was that the applications were taken by the school committee members from that town, they interviewed the candidates separately and sent the name to the select board to be voted on. Is that what happened last time? I, that's at least, as I said, I was not part of it, so I, I could be.
That's so good.
That's about right.
We get their select board member.
Right, yeah.
Man, select board.
So that's, I, I think that, that what we've done in the past is the members from the town on the school committee uh solicit applications, as you said, interview candidates and then bring their preferred candidate, um, or more than one if they want, but their preferred candidate, and we have a joint meeting and each person gets one vote. Each of the school committee members and each of the members of the select board, and so we jointly appoint the new person.
Which sounds like that says.
It's in line.
Doesn't, isn't that what it says?
Yeah, that sounds a screen. Oxford has it under control.
Right.
There's also a part to kick this process off that we have to follow.
Yeah, well, it's just, the school committee has to select, so solicit application, so that was, what's at the bottom of this was a pass notice.
But, um, the new appointment's only until?
The new appointment is only until the next election.
Yeah.
Yeah, so where the seat becomes vacant.
Next May.
In Boxford, in May.
But in a one year term.
The term just goes till May. Uh.
The appointment is till May and then the election is for a one year.
Right, the election is still the, is to finish the end of the, the, the current term.
That's gonna be my question.
That's how I join this with me. Oh, something's, yeah, it's just hers and.
Yeah, that's what the, that's the, the person, the last, the person so elected will fill the seat on the committee until the next town election, at which time a member will be elected to serve the remainder of the term, if any. So, as I said, there, Eric's term expires in twenty twenty seven, so they'll, you're right, the election will be in May of twenty six and then it'll be up again in May of twenty twenty seven.
Lucky, lucky person.
So one year, one year.
That's gonna be my question, because.
Had to do that.
It's, uh. We have, it's up, so you lose the stagger if you're not, if you don't do that.
Right, yeah, certainly value in doing it.
We're gonna have three people getting elected next, next year.
So the next, so the next thing that has to happen is Oxford still, Oxford solicits.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is an old one from Carolyn, when Carolyn Miller was was sort of quarterbacking this um back in twenty twenty one.
I'm trying to remember how we posted it, though.
I mean, I, we put it, we put it out to.
Barbara, did we post this through the town website as well?
I think we did.
Recall?
Good, I think we should.
Yeah.
We're seeing on social media and.
Do, do we as a school committee post?
I, I sent, I, I believe I sent this out on the parent link to all of the families in the district, I mean, one and a half. So we would do that, and then you can put it on the, the website and.
Okay.
Instagram and whatever else.
This is how Erica.
I got her. Yes, uh, yes, initially, yes.
Goes out. I mean, this, this email's, the Carolyn Miller, she filled her. Alright, sorry, I promised. Next step is Boxford's going to solicit inputs by, Mike's gonna put it out on the newsletter.
Yeah, tell me what dates you want and.
So who can take the action or can the, three of you, four, four of you?
Who, who should be the?
Coordinate on what the message is. That's fine.
Jeff is volunteering.
I did the last one, you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm due. Reach out to Robin and I'll coordinate with you guys. Right, and you'll coordinate it.
Yeah, just, yeah, all I need is just to fill in the dates and everything else, so when do you want them by and who, who should receive them, who should, who be you?
They first.
They first.
Yeah. The other question, you know, if you want to do.
That's within thirty days, doesn't it?
Uh, it says that it has to be, you had to notify the select board, so I think we just did. Within thirty days.
And then react.
You're supposed to give at least one week notice by the committee to the select board, so the voters of the town may have the opportunity to state their candidacy, the two governing bodies will meet to fill the vacancy by roll call vote, so. You know, so you have to give at least a week's notice.
I think last time we did two weeks.
Probably.
We have a two, you know, anyone within two weeks applying and then we went from there.
Alright, so, you guys can go figure it out. Mike, Josh, you all just sort it out.
Awesome.
A few weeks on it and then. Okay, thank you guys. Thanks, Jeff, for taking the lead. Appreciate it. Alright, uh, first reading of policy GBE.
E, E C. Too many, GBEBC.
Interesting. Is Trevor doing it?
Thank you.
I can do it, okay.
I don't see him on anymore.
Thank you, Melissa.
Alright, so this is a um policy that it was updated in um twenty twenty two by MASC and somehow we missed it in our review and we did the policy manual. Um, and the, we had most of the policy, but um MASC had added that by state law, raffles and games of chance must, may not be organized by schools as a sponsoring organization, so Masco can't hold a fifty fifty raffle. Um, and then employees of the district aren't allowed to participate unless they do as members of a sponsoring organization, so a teacher or a staff member can also not um hold a lottery and then all gifts and donations to the district must be accepted by a vote of the school committee. Um, so I recently learned that that last line might go against what our policy is for community booster organizations. So, um, we were recommending this, but um in the the boost, um.
Isn't there a dollar number?
Yeah, it's two hundred and fifty dollar. Um, I, and.
We need to run this by our attorney or what?
No, so in the, so we, we didn't have a dollar amount before, I'm just looking for it now because I didn't think to look at, it just occurred to me now. I'm trying to understand, so this line says all gifts and donations and that, and what does our policy say at, above a certain amount?
It's, it's, I think it's a two hundred and fifty dollar threshold.
Okay, so that's where the discrepancy is. Yeah, I don't know if that's, because then that would be a lot of, I, I don't know how often that happens, that it's a donation under two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Or if it.
Do you know, Mike? I mean, we seem to see a lot of donations, is it? Are we just not?
Do we need to pull this?
What?
I mean, are we?
No, it just occurred.
Must be covered for that.
It was just a thought that came to my head.
So are we, are we, unless you're looking it up or?
I don't know, um. So it's under the Student Support Organization guidelines and it says that, um. What was it? Yeah. Um. It's donations greater than three hundred and fifty dollars when it comes from a student support organization.
Fifty.
So I think that we could um personally say all gifts and donations to districts not from student support organizations must be accepted by the um subject to the Student Support Organization guideline must be accepted by a vote of the school committee.
Concerns with that?
I mean, that's what the.
Yeah, that's what the students.
SSO.
There's a threshold.
Need to run it by Alicia?
And we, so we're not, that we don't review them with Alicia anymore.
Okay.
They just did our whole manual, so. But we have a student, we have a student, we have a policy on, um.
I mean, I'm okay with accepting it if we're comfortable, but that's the right, the right answer, so.
Yeah, I'm telling you, that's what's in the Student Support Guidelines. I only know this, so this was after my meeting, I had to look up theater boosters, so that's the only reason I know. And I didn't run, I'm not the chair of the budget of the policy, so I just, it came across my brain.
I'm glad it did. Is the source, I see it's crossed out at the bottom of this about source mask updated twenty twenty five, should that be crossed out or is that actually correct?
Um, no, that the source should be crossed out. We compared our two policies.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Do we have a language we're comfortable with?
Um, I would suggest saying unless governed by, I, I'm just looking to see if I can find the, um. We may want to pull it and then, we have a meeting on Friday that I can have Trevor.
Okay, so did this wording come straight from MASC? Because to me, it doesn't make sense. Raffles and games of chance may not be organized by schools as a sponsoring organization, but then it says you can enter that activity if you're a member of a sponsoring organization such as a school.
Or community.
Or community organization, but school organization is, is really part of the school, isn't it? I mean, it, it.
No, so like the boosters could run a raffle, but the school.
The way that it's worded, it should be clear, if you ask me, I think it's poorly done, but it's contradictory a little bit. For each. But it is what it is.
So was the last word, all this for tonight or?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna request that we just, I'm gonna pick a vote on it.
Do it again on the next meeting.
And I'll let Trevor know. It's awesome.
Alright. Mike, over to you, alright? So first off, we've talked about this a little bit already, but uh last Wednesday, October twenty ninth, the Board of Directors of the Massachusetts School Building Authority invited uh Maskinamet Middle School and Maskinamet High School into the schematic design phase uh of the accelerated repair program. Uh, the district submitted a proposal, proposal in April uh to replace the roof and to convert the heating and cooling systems to heat pumps uh at both the middle and high schools. Uh, the accelerated repair program supports improving learning environments for children and teachers, reducing energy use and generating cost savings for districts. Uh, the roof and heating cooling systems have been identified as in need of repair or replacement for several years. Uh, the roof was last replaced in two thousand and one with an expected twenty year lifespan. Uh, and the district completed extensive short term repairs to the roof in twenty nineteen uh that were expected to last approximately five years. Uh, inconsistent heating and cooling has gradually interrupted uh the district's ability to create conditions conducive to learning. Uh, two current boilers in the middle school are approximately sixty years old and in danger of failure. Um, the high school's boilers were installed in two thousand and one. Uh, the lack of a functioning HVAC control system also hinders uh the ability to maintain appropriate classroom temperatures. Uh, by entering the program, uh Maskinamet can expect the uh MSBA grant funding uh to significantly reduce the impact to, to taxpayers. And voters in Boxford, Middleton and Topsfield will be asked to support the funding for the schematic design phase uh at their spring uh annual town meetings. If approved, the district will develop schematic drawings and cost estimates for the roof replacement and the HVAC work, uh and that should take about fourteen months to complete.
Like, please pause one second, I just want to recognize the work that Mike and Jeff did on, I mean, uh, I, you guys remember the package that we submitted, it was extensive and I know that they've supported multiple visits from the MSBA folks and um, it, yeah, it, this is just, this is a game changer for us.
Big deal.
So, uh, we should talk a little bit more about how we want to add, that's it, this is a great news story.
My little notes to ask.
Be big on budgets into next year, but just on the record, want to say thank you to Mike and Jeff for all the hard work into this, yeah, thank you, Mike.
Next up, uh, next Thursday, November thirteenth, uh, we invite parents of prospective ninth grade students uh to attend our annual eighth grade open house. Uh, the event was designed to help students and families joining Maskinamet Regional High School for the two thousand twenty six uh twenty twenty seven school year uh to learn more about what we have to offer. Uh, during the evening, parents will hear from the principal, meet department heads and explore some of the many clubs, activities and athletic teams that we have here available at Maskinamet. Uh, next up, uh, earlier this week, uh Assistant Superintendent Jeff Sands and I met with the design team from Vision Sports Design uh to review the latest uh draft of the designs for renovations to our outdoor track, our softball fields and our tennis courts. Uh, the plans include elements to address handicap access issues around the stadium uh and to bring our softball facilities in line with the baseball facilities. Uh, the plans will be reviewed by the uh School Committee's Capital and Budget Working Group on November twenty first. Uh, and with full school committee uh sometime after that this winter, so, not a million dollars.
I want to say that he told us during our last meeting that it was, it was like in hundreds. Not, you know, like six hundred thousand dollars or something.
Ooh.
I did write it down, but.
Okay.
But just so that everyone knows, the softball stuff is a title nine issue.
Yes.
Long.
Yeah, so that they are not, the, the facilities are not equivalent, so, um, this fixes that, um. Actually, we'll take a look at it, they're actually gonna move the varsity softball field to another place on campus that, that's a little more conducive.
So you don't have to walk through the outfield.
Don't have to walk through the outfield, the other, of the other game going on and, um, you know, scoreboards and um, you know, dugout facilities, still natural gas, so we don't have to worry about conscom. But, um, but yeah, just a, a, a facility that, you know, we can be proud of and is, is on par uh with the baseball facility. On that case, the track is a, of full um tear up and lay down new surface along the current track. Um, and then some uh grading issues around the stadium to uh address some.
Accessibility.
Very steep curves and steep hills and the weird curves and things like that, so, right. And then tennis is actually uh resurfacing the current courts and actually adding one, uh which is actually what is the standard right now for high school tennis. I think it's, we have four right now, five is what you really need for to run a match, so it's a fifth court and resurface all, so.
Great, thank you.
And then just uh the next uh, the parent coffee schedule for uh November uh is the high school will be on November fourteenth, um, and at the middle school on November twenty first. Um, those are uh Friday mornings from eight thirty till nine thirty, and so we ask parents to, to report to the main office for that.
Are you getting good attendance for that?
Uh, it's generally low, a couple, yeah, I think three or four is generally numbers.
Okay.
Uh, and then.
Better coffee.
We have, you take good coffees. A lot of times it's zoomies, um. Just, uh, we're getting into the winter season, so we want to talk about the school cancellation notification procedures. Um, those uh cancellations or delayed openings uh will be first communicated through passive means, uh such as uh my Instagram feed and local news media outlets. Uh, and then later through direct, direct contact through the blackboard communication system. Um, and once the decision is made to cancel uh or delay the start of school, we'll use the following outlets. Uh, and as I said, direct communications through Blackboard, which is uh the telephone and email systems. Um, we would do that prior to eight thirty at night if we make the, if we make the decision uh to close or delay school on the evening prior or at six o'clock in the morning if the decision is made on the morning of uh the cancellation or delayed opening. And then media communications will go out as soon as the decision has been made regardless of the time and shoot for before five thirty on the morning of uh cancellation. And, you know, as I said, uh, look at Instagram, um, and then we do the major media outlets, WBZ, uh WCVB, HDH, so channels four, five, seven, channel ten, uh, channel twenty five and NECN. And then we also put it to the uh Masco website under Superintendent News and Announcements. I win tonight, guys, so the phone will be by my back. Hopefully, hopefully we don't lose power.
Jeez. Did it come a little early today in Topsfield?
Uh, yesterday it flashed a few times during the day, um, so, which I was keeping my fingers crossed that we made it through. keeping my fingers crossed that we made it through. We did. So, but again, tonight will be another one where we're like, wake up in the morning and say, do we have power? So, just thinking about it. And there's just some uh, community notes. The eighth annual Middleton Turkey Trot 5K. Uh, there's a sign up there and that's on Thursday, November 27th. Which is Thanksgiving. And then the Trittown Council is also offering their uh, Ski Bradford program uh, for our, what will be our students, it's all students in uh, grades uh, three through eight in the Trittowns. So our seventh and eighth graders will be eligible to do that. That's who we get.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, uh, superintendent search update.
Um, we're, we're cruising right along. Very productive subcommittee. Thank you, everyone, for being so fully on board and committed to getting this work done. It's a heavy lift. Um, we have the role posted on numerous sites. So the um, superintendent position is posted on the Masco website. It's referenceable from the homepage. It's also on um, several other professional sites like School Spring, which automatically posts to Indeed. Um, we've got all of our partner organizations like um, MASK, Mask Association of School Superintendents um, and several others that I don't have off the top of my head, but I can share them. Um, so it's posted in no less than six different sites. So we're getting good coverage um, on the job posting. In addition to that, we have the posting up for our community advisory committee. Um, so that is also on the Masco homepage. It's gone up on the newsletters and will go out again this week. Um, it's gone out on our social media. Anybody that wants to be involved as a member of the Trittown or the Masco community um, can utilize the link from the homepage to submit through the Google form or email me directly. A lot of people have been doing that. Um, the team that we are looking to build includes um, kind of a cross section of the the Masco Trittown community. So one middle school teacher, one high school teacher, um, one administrator from Masco, one parent from each of the member towns, one town official from each of the, the member towns, and then obviously the subcommittee as representative of the school committee. Um, just to refresh everybody's memory on that. Um, and tonight's meeting was for this uh, school committee meeting. We've worked on um, drafting discovery questions and thinking about the evaluation rubric. So we are prepared when our interviews start.
What's the deadline for submission?
Letters of interest for the community advisory committee are due Monday, the 10th. And then the superintendent posting is open through November 30th.
Great. Thank you. We've advertised, so I'm sure you're getting interest from parents in the broader community. Some?
A couple. Yeah. There ha, there has not been an enormous flood of how do I get involved? There's been dribs and drips. I don't think we've had a dozen people.
Okay. Have you, have you reached out directly to the select board of FinCom? Or a representative yet?
I have not, but I do plan to do that.
Okay. And then I see Nico's in our audience tonight.
Mm-hmm. Spread the word.
Is there a formal mechanism you guys are using to advertise to middle school and high school teachers?
I mean, I would assume that the principal's putting it in their newsletters would communicate it, but I can certainly coordinate by way of them or admin or I, I don't, usually don't have direct communication with faculty, so.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that the message is not just, not just um, we're looking for community members, but we're specifically looking for two teachers, right? I mean, Nico, I don't know if you have a suggestion for us? Let's put you on the call.
Uh, getting word out to the teachers.
Yeah, in terms of recruiting.
The most of the teachers know uh, that the search is commencing in terms of how we want to structure, who's going to be part of it. I think we can have a conversation on that and figure out how best, so I didn't know how many people you want to be part of it, but we can certainly talk uh, about what that looks like. And then I'm certain there will be people who would be uh, willing to be part of that.
I think I heard her say one middle school teacher, one high school teacher.
Say it again.
I think I heard her say one middle school, one high school.
Yeah, yeah. So that we can certainly fill those positions. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. So Nico, you know, I get in touch with Adrian. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. If anybody has questions?
Um, we also said one admin. So how do we reach out to find out is who in the administration would?
I've had a number of admin reach out.
Okay.
Either with their own interest or with questions. So it seems like the, then.
Great.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you, guys, for moving with urgency.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, if there's still other questions, uh, press on, uh, subcommittee reports. Yeah, community relations.
Bless you. Um, so we, we've just been upkeeping with getting out good news from Masco. Did you know, like, things that are going on? We will do an MSBA announcement. We'll work with you and write it up how you want us to get that information out there. But I think um, sharing things like what's going on, for example, with sports or clubs in the school and just letting people know how they can be a part of it. Like when we had that um, the athletic update that was sent out was great. So I could just shorten it and send it out and let everybody know if they want to come cheer on the team, no matter what team it is, golf, soccer, volleyball, um, things like that, just trying to rotate through. Um, also, we're working on sponsors for the Holiday Senior Citizen Concert, the luncheon. It's going to be Friday, December 12th. From 12 to 1:15. So working on getting at least two sponsors or, or more if we can get from all three towns um, for that. And then our next working meeting is going to be December 8th at 11:30 on Zoom. Our next community dialogue will be here November 19th at six o'clock. Uh, and we're going to try to theme them out if there's a topic that is big, you know, like the superintendent. Yeah, superintendent search. So um, we're going to try to organize it a little bit more so that if people want to talk about that, they can come in person and, and talk about it. So just try to keep the flow of good news and updates going um, out to the Trittown.
I, I really like that idea because I think having your topics pointed towards something like a superintendent search.
It helps.
Keeps the, helps keep the community from obfuscating the process when they have an issue.
Right.
Right? Uh, and just reminder, community, right, to, there's a chain of commands. And when you've exhausted all resources from the chain of command, that never changes us, but want to make sure that they're uh, they're respecting the chain of command too. Um, Joe, do you think the DCI can help with some fun facts around the MSBA? I think it'd be great if we did a whole posting on it.
That's what I want to do.
What it means, what it doesn't mean, the impact is, what's that?
Maybe digest.
Might not be fun, but.
That's what I want to say, too.
Fun fact that it'd be clear that this is so uh, one step in a multi-step process to getting full funding, that it's, it's not a guarantee of, of millions of dollars of reimbursement at this point.
Meeting member who can take care of this for us.
So, sounds good.
I just think, you know, we, we have to continue to say this over and over and over and over again as we get to.
Yes.
Right.
Without question.
It's a, it would be a really good thing to get out there. So anything that we can do for that would be great.
All right. So thanks, Joe, for volunteering somebody.
Well, you, you all know, I've got Topsfield FinCom member under my roof, so um, I had, well, and I initially said, oh, did I tell you that we got accepted into this program? And then when I fully read the, the, the letter from the MSBA that I read, not quite so fast. So I had to quickly retract that statement and have been working to be sure that it was very clearly stated what the limitations of this initial limitation are.
They, they definitely qualify that all the time, but as long as we follow their process, it's pretty much going to happen.
Yeah. DCI.
Okay. So maybe a couple of other things that we didn't bring up or discuss yet tonight. Um, capital related. So one of the things that Jeff has done is he's gone back to StanTech and asked for pricing to change field two from artificial turf to grass. The reason behind that is um, we think that uh, the conscom in Boxford will be more likely to approve the project if field two is grass. Uh, I had some community members reach out to me and suggest as much. And uh, so I think this likely needs to be an agenda item for us to discuss in detail at some point in the future. Um, I think this is up on the 20th, the next conscom meeting. Is that what we?
We just pushed it out to December.
Oh, it's December. Okay.
December.
Fourth. So sometime between now and then, we need to discuss an open meeting and decide whether we want to spend this money, go down this path, because I think that's a critical part of um, hopefully getting approval from the uh, conscom in Boxford. All right. The other thing, uh, uh, just budget wise, uh, I don't know what numbers have and haven't been shared. Jeff has, has thrown some preliminary numbers at us. I think they've been sent out to everyone. And this was before we got the enrollment numbers. Uh, so everything is subject to change, right? Um, but it's going to be a challenge to get near the numbers that the towns are asking for. His initial level funding numbers came in at a, I think a 4.9% increase in overall budget, which translates into an even higher number to the towns. And I did some initial calculations and, you know, it, it depends on how what the baseline is that you're looking at. I'm a little confused after some of the discussions tonight from where I thought we were versus where, where they'd like us to go. But it could be significant uh, um, huts to get there. However, I will add that Jeff has been fairly conservative in his estimates um, in terms of projecting large insurance increases. I think he was expecting out of district to stay the same or go up perhaps. So per, you know, I don't know what his new numbers are going to look like. Maybe the, the hole's not as big as we thought. Um, but we'll, we'll see where, where it goes.
Joe, can we go back to, back to the track for a second?
Yeah.
So the, the ask to StanTech for field two to be grass. It's not that we would replace field two with grass. It's just that we wouldn't do turf touch in that place. We'd only be doing one field. Is that right?
Right. You still have to redesign the storm uh, water drainage system. And so it's yeah, for field one. And so that he's getting an estimate on the cost of that and then we can discuss that on committee and decide whether that's something we would want to go forward with. It's not clear that we could go to conscom and say, we're just going to make it grass and that's good enough. They might want to see the whole plan. And so therefore we might have to spend the money in order to get a decision.
We're just going to leave it as grass.
Yeah, there wouldn't be anything done to filter.
Right. I just want to make sure.
That's what.
Couple of times, we're going to make it grass.
No, it's grass.
We're going to make it grass in the design.
Making the plan grass. The plan is going to be.
Plan will eliminate field two and.
Field two is out of scope.
Not going to go spend a million dollars.
You guys.
The plan is going to be grass.
We have like a project manager that's like working with the town to determine that, like, that's our best option.
So the, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for Jeff completely or for Mike completely, but I believe that's what our attorney is.
Working with council on this. So, yeah. We're going to, this is going to come up soon.
Yeah. Uh, I think that's it. Um, I just want to add, um, the minutes for September 26th are getting posted. I'm waiting for Bill to say yes. Maybe you already did. I sent an email on it.
I did. Did say.
They excluded our, our goals for the year. Um, I'll form for the committee. You guys can all let me know if we missed something for some reason. Um, and I guess I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, DCI. Jeff?
Uh, we just met yesterday as the, the Volch Committee. Uh, there's only two of us now. So uh, and at least one of us is stretched a little thin. So stretched a little thin with the superintendent search. So we started taking a decision to kind of back off something like, we had some big goals. We're going to back off those for now. And we're going to spend most of our time just working with community relations, just get, get our voice out there and get a little more visible. Um, one of the other things we're going to do is um, the ACE student group, um, we're going to try to open listening session with them as well. Um, probably virtual because it's, they're here during the day and we're so um, that's the, it was the Appreciating Cultures and Ethnicities Club here at Masco. So we're going to do a little just one-on-one outreach with them. Because they're um, you know, right in our wheelhouse. So they seem open to that, which is nice. So, yeah. So we'll be partnering with community relations pretty heavily moving forward. Give Kendra some more work.
We are also.
Yes, it's, yeah.
Basically.
They're adopting me basically.
Thank you.
Get some economy out of this group.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, policy?
We have a meeting on Friday. Coming in.
Nice and succinct. The ears on updates. I mean, we had a big meeting tonight.
Yeah.
I don't know if any.
Went well. Went well.
I mean, I.
Lively discussion.
I'm going to say, well. Have liaised. At our first meeting. Topsfield. We had just, just a, a get together, just to say hi and to know each other a little bit better as elected members of the community. Thank you for coming. Um, and um, it was, it was just kind of nice, you know, just around the table. What do you, what do you do for your day job? What keeps you busy? Like just get to know each other a little bit. Um, and then, you know, share thoughts and concerns about all the work that we're trying to do collectively. So it was a nice way to kind of prime conversations and um, get ready for budget season. So thank you for the idea, Boxford. I think you guys do the breakfast thing. So. Talking.
Do you have anything?
No, 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 just. Oh, liaisons, um.
That's where we are.
Right, Jeff.
Uh, I mean, I've had a couple of discussions with Sarah Guido over the last couple of weeks in conjunction with um, the conscom going ons. Um, I would say they're starting to get energized about raising funding again. You know, she's hopeful that if we go down this path of changing, that we're going to get a decision relatively quickly. And she's eager to engage with big donors as well. Was at our last DCI meeting. Uh, I think she's probably going to keep coming uh, as long as there's, there's progress on this. Um, so I mean, that was just nice to hear. Obviously, maybe not obviously to some of us, but you know, she restated they can't raise $12 million if that's the price tag, but she does think they can raise a decent amount of money, you know? So she sounds optimistic and like I said, energetic about it, which is, was nice to see. Yeah.
Yeah, from a Middleton perspective, I continue to threaten to set up breakfast with uh, continue to be delinquent on that, but I'd have crossed paths a couple of times with Costa and um, just in preparation for tonight. So we'll have to think a little bit more about if we want to get a breakfast scheduled with them. All right. Consent agenda.
We're going to have Trevor here to get, make the motion. Trevor's like the designated consent agent.
Motion to approve the consent.
To read it?
Nope.
He just did. I just did. I think I did. Your second meeting minutes. Uh, warrants, $1,459,501.91. Basketball booster donation. Thank you, basketball boosters. And uh, to gift the class of. Thank you. 1975. We have a motion.
It's a good year.
I already made a motion.
I made a second.
Or get with the program.
Oh, Trevor's not with us. Trevor, you there?
Nope.
All right. You want to stand? We have one more motion for them.
Much. Trevor, see you.
A second. Bill. All right. Thank you, everybody. Ready? Four minutes late. I'm sorry.
But he wants some pizza. Yeah.
Good, everybody.
Those Google free cookies are shit. Those cookies are amazing.